So, I think all the approved is up. It's gonna be a smaller call.
I see that they're free to space. Every way is a question. How these four and those two. They're gonna change this change, but now I'm gonna face directly on these. Yeah. Uh, so much, just some parts of the diesel. I've got them out built up here. And most of those parts out there are still set post-ala by lots of over 10,000. Drag these out. They have no storage service where all the drags. They're not as good. But no, they're not as good. They would count as more of a place that places. Maybe this lot may be less difficult. They have a lot of cars. Yeah. It's a lot of cars. That's, that's that. Literally. But then it's just a lot of. Yeah, that, 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 that. So, what they are, we had a lot of, like, how we build that. That's what we technically, there's pieces of conditions. And that is area. You know, that's why you just like to call them to improve. We have on, for my progress. But you can't move it out of the city. So, I'm trying to do that in the population. They always agree that the law's way is not as cool as you get into. And so, what they don't. Well, if you, if they had a post office, they'd give it to you. You know, whatever. The postal services. That's something that's. We're down to forty-eight, that's about forty-nine. Therefore, they could get one. Of course, from the seventy, they're like, forty-one. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, they have their bills to respond to. Well, I looked at the, 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 they are the right. And here's the iron. Because I'm tall, I don't understand. So, I'll assume that they only consider which was. Cause I don't see our, this is where it's. That's about the same. So, they're like, where's this? So, it's supposed to be so, 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 now you treat. Access to all city laws. You've got, it's been, it's been published. But the public, uh, wants to. Or is the other thing, you know? Or just want to take it as a public. Wow, yeah, yeah, yeah. Good.
The city council meeting, June sixth, twenty seventeen, order. Please try it with me, virtual agents, all five, silent, standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Item two, roll of all council. Council President Page.
Here.
Councilmember Hurd.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Muntz here.
Here.
Council Vice President Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Dickerson.
Here.
Councilmember McGee.
Here.
Council, Councilman E.
Here.
Thank you, item three is approved within minutes of May sixteenth, twenty seventeen. This is where we move to approve the minutes of, uh, to council, uh, city council, uh, meeting, May sixteenth, twenty seventeen, second. They move the second to approve. City council minutes, May sixteenth, twenty seventeen, very public comments. Okay, council discussion.
Public question.
Question called for, all favor of approval. City council minutes of May sixteenth, twenty seventeen, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carrying seven zero. Item four is correspondence. So, this is there. Item five is council disclosure of state communications. Does anyone wish to address that? Seeing that, item six is a public hearing. Zoning variance from LMC one seven point two oh point oh one oh. Missed uses of highway commercial zone for medical marijuana dispensary. This is the time and the place for public hearing on City Laurel zoning variance, LMC one seven point two oh point oh one oh. Missed abuses of highway commercial zoning for medical marijuana dispensary or dispenser. And now open up the public meeting with the first task of staff to present the item. And here are public comments.
Good evening, council mayor. Sorry I couldn't be here last week. I wasn't feeling very well. Uh, but I'm hoping to, hopefully answer a few questions and then, um, just, I'll run through this part of it with you. Um, this is a zoning variance. It is not a zone change. I think maybe reading the minutes, that might have gotten a bit confused, um, last week. But it is for a variance for allowable use. Um, this applicant is, um, Richard Abermide, and he is requesting a variance from LMC seventeen point two zero point zero one zero for allowable uses in highway commercial zoning. Currently, medical marijuana dispensaries are only allowed in light industrial zoning. Um, the growing cultivation is a totally separate thing from this as well. Um, that's allowed in light and heavy industrial zoning. Uh, but this is not, um, has nothing to do with that either. Um, so, the property is at, um, it is currently a twenty-four unit commercial renter owned development with two twelve unit buildings that are connected by shared walls on the north and south side of the property. The property is located at two oh four South Washington Avenue, Unit A one. Um, again, this, this variance is only for the applicant itself and this Unit A one property. Um, in two thousand and eleven, the city council changed the zoning code to allow for medical marijuana dispensaries in light industrial zoning. Medical marijuana cultivation facility or cultivation facility is allowed in light industrial and heavy industrial zoning. Uh, before the city council approved, uh, that zoning in two thousand and eleven, the planning board did recommend for the zoning of medical marijuana dispensaries in highway commercial zoning, central business district, and community commercial zoning. There was amendment at city council and as it stands today is the light industrial zoning. Um, the applicant has included a justification in your packets and as for the requirements of LMC seventeen point seven two point zero seven zero, a public hearing was held up. Planning board, um, the minutes also reflect that the, the vote was, the vote was unanimous and that was not the case. Um, the vote was five to two, still, um, approving, um, but it was not unanimous. Um, there were six proponents and one letter of opposite, six proponents and one letter supporting the item and, um, there was one letter not supporting the item at that public hearing. Um, there was discussion from the board regarding parking, off-street parking requirements for this development, um, specifically, um, coming from Board Member Colley, who was, as you guys know, the prior building official here, um, that those units were permitted for storage purposes, um, small units, um, with just sole owners who were gonna store their items, um, at that location and then work elsewhere. I have looked through the parking requirements code multiple times and have tried to piece together what I think would be the requirements, um, but it's not on, um, uses permitted. It's, the requirements are based on uses, um, and some are based on square feet. Uh, it does take into account adding to an existing building, um, and the increase in parking requirements for that, but it does not mention the change of use of a building and adding for parking requirements, um, in that case. Um, the, there are three staff suggested conditions of approval. Number one is that the variance shall only be allowed for the applicant and at this location. Number two is that the variance shall be, shall only be allowed for medical marijuana dispensary or dispensaries. And number three, the applicant shall apply for a City of Laurel business license. Um, that is all I have at this time. And look forward to your questions later. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And now open up the public hearing and we're first. Open the floor for public comment. Copies rules governing the public hearing have been posted to council chambers. Are there any proponents supporting the item?
That's us, yeah.
Any proponents supporting the item? If you'd like to, give your name and address, please.
My, my name's Jason Smith. My address is forty-five fifteen Palisades Park, Billings, Montana. Um, I've come before you, I guess, a third, maybe a fourth time. I started in two thousand and eleven, like, coming year, two thousand and ten, possibly in front of the city council, um, to get this approval, um, so the city would at least accept it and help the patients and I am asking you, still, seven years later, please consider this. I know we've met the requirements and, um, just, I and the patients would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Again, are there any other proponents? Name and address, please.
My name is Richard Abermide. Twenty-seven oh five Sage Springs Circle.
Could you please spell your last name for the record?
Abermide, A-B-R-O-M-E-I-T.
Thank you.
And it was twenty-seven oh five Sage Springs Circle. So anyways, um, I represent Montana Advanced Caregivers. Um, I want to remind the council that this is a request for variance, not a zoning change. It will only be for me at that location for that purpose. We've met all seven of the criteria. We got the five-two approval from the planning board. The parking situation, the unit sits on the end, it's A one. I look across the street and I see par electric take up about twenty spots down the way as well as the fiberglass structures. I don't see a whole lot of parking on the opposite side of the street where the unit is as far as anybody even using that parking along there, along the street. Um, so I believe that there's available parking there. Um, and lastly, myself and Montana Advanced Caregivers would welcome becoming a part of Laurel's business community and, uh, I thank you for your considerations.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents supporting the item?
Uh, Mayor and distinguished councilmen. My name is Steve Solberg and my address, thirty-five thirteen Prescott Drive in Billings. And I am the current property owner and representative of Canyon Creek Stations. And, uh, because this is a variance request, I wanted to give you a little background. When we, uh, first were approached with an offer to buy this property about four months ago, maybe a little bit longer ago, my partners and I are pretty stingy about who gets to move into our complex because we want it neat, tidy, and presentable and businesslike. And when we found out what his mission was, we were skeptical. And, uh, so we did a little research. We went to the police department, found out the law and, and the police chief said, you know, it's a legal business according to Montana law. And so we proceeded and then we were invited down to take a tour of the facility that they have now down in Billings. And, uh, we were very impressed. It's clean, it's run professionally, and it's very compliant. So, I, I think from our perspective, um, we, there's a lot of businesses we don't really want in there that comply for light industrial. So, this to us was a business that we felt was very compatible and if we changed the name of it to a drugstore or a food store or something like that, it would be a no-brainer where it would fit right in. But because of the stigma of the, the product they're selling, uh, it makes it a little more, uh, emotional and, uh, harder to sell. But it's our opinion that we would be very comfortable and the business would be very compatible in our complex and it's a legitimate business from our perspective. So, if he moved across the street sixty feet, fifty feet across the street, he, it wouldn't be any issue because that's light industrial. So, moving sixty feet across the street, uh, makes no difference to me, but I, I understand the zoning issues, but, um, and the other thing I want to mention is that I think our condominium association would be tougher in complying, having him comply with the traffic and the parking and the, and what's going on there than, than the city would. So, we think it's a legitimate business and it's worth, uh, having them as an acre and a contributor to our complex.
Thank you, Bill. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents not in support of the item? Are there?
I'm Candy Onoszko from Sisc, sixteen oh two East State Street, Laurel.
Can, can you repeat that name again, please?
Candy Onoszko.
You spell your last name, please.
O-N-O-S-Z-K-O.
Thank you.
I just, um, am a concerned mother, grandmother. We've seen what this has done in other states. Colorado is a great example. And I don't think we need it here. I voted against legal marijuana when it was presented before the state, before, uh, the voters. I just think it's a core business to have in a small community. You can look at Colorado and see what that has done there. This surrounding states are having issues with crime all around Colorado. And I just don't see why it's necessary. Billings already has shops. If people need medical marijuana, I'm okay with people using it for medical reasons. Let them get a prescription from their doctor and go to Walmart and get it filled. I don't think we need this type of business here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? No further public comment. I'll ask staff to have them to, 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 any questions and they're all done. Now closing the public hearing. Back in council, consent items, item seven. Any separation of consent items?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of your consent agenda of June sixth, twenty seventeen.
Second. They move to second to approve. Separation of consent items of June sixth, twenty seventeen. Is there any public comment? The council discussion.
Call for question.
Question called for, all favor of approval of consent agenda for June sixth, twenty seventeen, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried seven zero. Item A is ceremonial calendar. Item nine is reports of boards and commissions. Item ten is audience participation. This is the three-minute limit. Does anyone wish to address the council on any item of your choosing? Anyone? Seeing that, item eleven is scheduled matters, confirmation of appointments. Item B is resolution number R one seven dash one nine. Resolution authorizing the mayor sign an engagement letter with Dorsey and Whitney, LLC, as bond counsel for special proven district number one eighteen.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of resolution number R one seven dash one nine.
That's right. They move to second to approve resolution number R one seven dash one nine. Is there any public comment? Any council discussion?
Question.
Question called for, all in favor of approval of resolution number R one seven dash one nine, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried seven zero. Resolution number R one seven dash two zero, council has been delayed and we will hear that at another time and be available at, um, workshop or more and we, our planner will fill us in on why that is.
Yes, um, so we are in the process of creating a special proven district one eighteen. Uh, we started with the bond counsel, Dorsey and Whitney, to, um, go through with an easier process of creating this district through a signature petition. Um, that way you remove a protest period, but you have to have a hundred percent of the law owners in the district sign the petition. Um, we are currently missing a few signatures and, um, may need to go through the process of the protest period, um, in, in itself. Um, so we'll know more at the end of this week and either way, it'll be on the agenda for the next workshop and council.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Move on to item D. It's a resolution number R one seven dash two one. Resolution accepting the bid of CMG Construction LLC and authorize, authorizing the mayor to sign all related documents for the South Washington Avenue and Southeast Forest Street project, City of Laurel, Montana.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the approval of resolution number R one seven dash two one.
Second. They move to second to approve resolution number R one seven dash two one. Is there any public comment? Any council discussion?
All questions.
Question called for, all in favor of approval of resolution number R one seven dash two one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried seven zero. Item P is resolution number R one seven dash two two. Resolution of the city council granting variance from the city zoning ordinance to allow medical marijuana dispensary business at two oh four South Washington Avenue, Unit one A, a property currently zoned highway commercial under the Laurel business code.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve resolution number R seventeen dash two two.
Second. They move to second to approve resolution number R one seven dash two two. Is there any public comment? Council discussion. What else, member? No. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as, uh, this council knows, I never am a fan of variances because they always seem to, um, incorporate the necessity to not only take into consideration the variance as it stands, but also what future variances will come along with them. I do understand our municipal code has a criteria for variances because sometimes they are a necessity and sometimes before this council, which seems to have a lot of requests for variances for whatever reasons. And I just don't have a marker of other city councils or whatnot to know they have to deal with it as much as we do, but we seem to have a lot of requests for them. Um, my concern is twofold. One, I'm not convinced that the parking issue has been resolved and I know the variance hasn't passed before the parking issue is resolved. And two, even the, um, most recent minutes of the, uh, city planning board indicate that there's a struggle to understand the, the verbiage of the, uh, of the variances, the criteria that they're supposed to meet. I'm concerned that we say, well, we've met the criteria, when that is still left for interpretation. I'm also concerned that it has to be pointed out that the entire city planning board did not vote for this variance approval, um, but there was some, some, uh, demise there. While I remain very, very supportive of the city planning board and the job that they do and I highly respect them and take into consideration everything, everything they do, um, I'm at the same time very concerned about repeatedly variances being needed and I wonder if we're not writing our codes properly or we're not figuring out the why behind why things are zoned where they're at and the dividing lines are blurred or what exactly is taking place there. So, I don't remain a hundred percent convinced that this variance is necessarily a good idea, but I don't remain convinced that it's necessarily a bad idea for our citizens either. It's a very, very challenging thing that we've been placed into because this, this particular variance request revolves around a hot button issue for so many people and that's what, um, can so easily convolute the subject. My concern is, we as a city council are constantly granting these variances and I wonder why we're not getting our zoning down so that variances are not that big of a necessity.
Thank you. Your council discussion.
Call for question.
Okay.
Council Vice President Nelson.
If I might, thank you very much. With, uh, don't want to beat a dead horse, um, councilmember McGee's points are, are well taken and they echo, um, a lot of questions I've had on the subject. Again, the job of this council isn't necessarily, uh, just to look at today and, and requests that are before the body today, but, uh, it's our responsibility to, when we're undertaking those requests, to look at the future, five years, fifteen years, ten, or ten, twenty years down the road, whatever it may be, and, uh, to take, to take that into consideration of how we may tie the hands of, uh, future bodies. Is it possible that they could find themselves not, adamantly not wanting to approve a variation and being sued and forced to because of a presence set by a past body such as ours today? Always questions that gnaw at me, um, when I, when I think about what it is we do and that it's really important that, that we look ahead as much as we're look at today. But I think that most importantly, I don't think we've spent enough time, uh, people discussing this. There's, there's, to me, there's parking issues, um, that are associated with retail businesses that I don't think we've addressed. And I think that, in my view, it'd be, it would be wrong for us to make a decision going forward with a variance without having scrutinized, uh, some of these questions and considerations a little bit more so that, uh, we've actually made an informed decision rather than one that we felt that we needed to make. And that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Council President Page.
I hate to bring up the hot button issue, but Mr. McGee referred to this issue as a hot button issue, um, in referring to the marijuana. Um, the difficulty I have in this is, is supplying a variance for something that in federal law is not acceptable. Um, and in having several friends that are, um, either current or, or previous VEA agents, it had, it's a hard thing for me to look at allowing a business that is essentially illegal. Yes, it's legal within the state means, but not, not legal in the, in the federal means. And so I, it's, that's a tough one for me to sit down on. It's a, it's a hot button issue and I think the marijuana industry as a whole has actually approached it wrongly. They need to go, if they claim it's medical and it's beneficial, then they need to go through the process that makes it drug illegal. But that's where I fall down on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Eaton.
Thank you, um, but then again, I think that, that was before the.
But then again, I think that what's before the council right now is whether or not to allow someone to be zoned light industrial or move across the street 60 feet to what is zoned light industrial. And I think that that's, that is the only issue that is in front of this council, not the rest of the questions with regard to what it is that the business will be doing. Thank you.
Press President Pales.
The problem I have with that statement from Councilmember Eaton is the variance is part of one of the number one thing on the variance is this, the variance is approved only for this applicant, this applicant that sells medical marijuana, and it is restricted to dislocation. Thus, we're approving what that applicant does. That is states' rights. That we, the variance is approved for this applicant. We know who the applicant is. So we have to take that into consideration, just like if you, I don't know, decided to put a diesel mechanic shop next door to the nursing home. I don't ask you what other things, but something that is not acceptable, period, in an area that is being asked to be variance. So yes, you're right, it is a variance issue, I understand that, but it's for this specific person. Nobody else can move in there, but that doesn't mean somebody else couldn't ask to move in there and go through the process of being.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickerson.
I think as we discussed at the last workshop, we got a business like this 15 miles down the road that's been approved by the LA City Council that folks are currently using and possibly bringing back to Laurel because of medical reasons that they have a prescription for. And we don't know the number or the amount of people in Laurel that are required to use this type of medication to ease pains and high comfort. And I kind of find it hard to, many people have to drive to get something that we have the possibility of also being able to buy from here and being controlled, not just going in and buying it to buy it, of having prescriptions to buy this product. And I think we owe it to our citizens to take them into consideration, and maybe some of them can't drive that distance to find such gains of comfort and so forth. No, I don't think, I don't think we're looking at the whole picture as far as maybe some are just looking at it as, hey, this is bad stuff. Yes, but it's also found to be proven to be helpful in a lot of cases. And I think we owe it to our citizens that need this to possibly provide the opportunity to have them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Eaton.
Yes, I think Councilmember Dickerson's points are valid and well taken, but I think there's a couple of things he may misunderstand. One is, the LA City Council did not have to approve for the variance location of that business there where it's zoned to be, if I'm not wrong about that. I think I'm right about that, although I could be wrong. And the other thing is, I agree that, and one reason why, and regardless of what the product is, that's not the issue here, the variance is the issue. But the issue for this council is every time we grant a variance, what are we doing with the future? What variances are we guaranteeing people in the future because this variance was granted? This is a proverbial nose of a camel under the tent, and soon the camel will be in the tent. And so I advise the council for us to seriously think about all of our variances. To say this is one time, this one place is not exactly true because we don't know what the future holds for what other people will request, and as Councilmember Nelson pointed out, may have to be granted, even though it would be the desire of citizens in council not to grant something because something was already granted in the past. And that's what I want us to think about. We open these gates, what is going to come through other than just one thing for one place? You know, if we're just one thing for one place and guaranteed forever, I wouldn't have an issue with it, but I don't believe that it is. And so what I would like to see is, I would like to see zoning rules and regulations in place, in places for people to have the appropriate businesses that they have without variances having to come before this council. That's what I would like to see in a perfect world. I know that doesn't exist. I know it will never exist, but that's what I would like to see us work towards.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickerson.
If by chance this variance is granted and this business moves in, and down the road, this business decides, hey, it's not working, and we're going to close the business and not have anything like that here, at that time, could this come back before the council to change the variance back to highway commercial as it is now so the city would have control again over what took place?
Can I speak on that?
Please, please do.
And so, this is not changing the color of the map at all. It is a variance for an allowable use. So what Councilmember Pales was saying about the fact that it's based on the applicant, it is based on the use and the allowable use of a medical marijuana dispensary or dispensary, and it repeats itself in there, but that is the use. It's not going to change the color, it's not going to make it light industrial and A unit, it's just going to allow a medical marijuana dispensary in highway commercial zoning in Unit A1. Is that okay?
So my question is this.
Please speak up so we can get everybody in here.
My question is this, if they do not continue that business and they move out and that business stays under the variance, it would not stay under the variance?
It's only for the applicant, it's for Richard Offermy and Unit A1. So if Richard leaves, it's gone. If he moves over to Unit B3, it's gone.
And so it stays highway commercial?
Yeah, it still stays highway commercial. Even with the variance, it stays highway commercial. So if they left and, say, a fiberglass structure type business, that's totally, you can't do that there, it's too small, but a business for a light industrial wanted to come in there, they would have to apply for a variance as well. Typically, we don't have, I myself have not done an allowable use for a variance since I've been here. Other communities don't allow variances for allowable uses. We don't have anything that says that. This is the only avenue that I have for applicants that are not complying with the code to try and comply with the code as to bringing it to you guys.
Thank you. Any other questions for the House or for the Senate, council?
No.
Any other council wish to speak on anything on this side? Questions called for. All in favor of approval of Resolution Number R17-22 will signify by saying a "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Could I get the ayes raised their hands, please, so we can get them on the record? Ayes. 2. Thank you. Motion fails.
Excuse me. What is the appeals process?
That's out of order, Mr. Mayor. There's no public comment at this time.
He's shouting. Purchase a piece of property right outside of town.
So what's your attitude? 2-5, I'm sorry. Item F is Resolution Number R17-23, Resolution authorizing the contract with Everbridge Hotel Division of City, verse 111, and the name of the service.
Resolution Number R17-23.
Second.
We move to second to approve Resolution Number R17-23. Is there any public comment? Any council discussion?
Called a question.
Question called for. All in favor of approval of Resolution Number R17-23 will signify by saying a "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passed. Item 12, as items removed to consent agenda, there were none. Item 13 was community announcements, this is above a one-minute limit. Anybody wish to address the council for a minute on any item? Seeing that, councilor.
Senator Wilkie, 1017, 7-10, here in Laurel. Your honor, councilmembers, I'd like to commend you on your decision you just made. I think it needs a lot more research. Personally have an objection to that product. I spent a year in Vietnam and never touched this stuff. I had to smell it. When I was in law enforcement, I had to smell it to search it out, and I believe that there's a better avenue for these folks to do. I don't need, believe we need to have it in our community. They already have it in Bellings. Until the federal government says that it's legal everywhere and they make it a legal product that you can go to Walmart and buy, I think we need to keep it out of our community. And I commend you for your decision.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address, address the council. Item 14 is council discussion. Council President Pales.
I should want to thank you for your understanding of the last two sessions I had family comments. Thank you very much. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Hurd.
I have nothing, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Mottier.
I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor, about this proceeding on this marijuana. I agree with what Councilman Pales said, that you can't separate the variance from the product that's being used. I spent 28 years in law enforcement trying to wipe some of this stuff out, and here, what they've basically done is they want medical marijuana, and the state's approving it even though it's a violation of federal law, and then trying to circumvent the federal law and go around it. And I've seen abuses in other states of marijuana, medical marijuana being used where people would come in with so-called cards that had injuries, they never really had injuries, all they wanted was marijuana to smoke. I don't understand why the, if there was a legitimate medical use for it, the American Medical Association doesn't approve it, which will move it from a Schedule 1 hallucinogen to a Schedule 2 for medical purposes. That way they could obtain this through a pharmacy and through a physician like anyone else could. And I feel it's just a, it's a violation of federal law. I think they're just trying to circumvent, oh, it's more than one United States code. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not going to speak on variance as we discussed earlier in the proceeding. I would like to let everyone know that the cemetery commission will be having a meeting next week, Tuesday, the 13th, at 5:00 here in the council chamber. We have a full agenda, so it's going to be a busy meeting. We'll probably not have one in July, so we'll try to get ahead of a few things and get some ideas going and take some record of time to work on those and then come back and all this. Wanted to make mention of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickerson.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember McGee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two things. One is, there's an opportunity for citizens to become a member of this council. As I understand it, those seats that are open, you can file for a seat before June 19th to be on the November ballot, so people should know about that as well as we as a council. And also, I noticed in the most recent minutes of the city planning board that the city planning board struggled with the variance verbiage that they didn't understand it, which I have to agree with that assessment, although they seemed very eloquent in understanding it when the people were standing before them. I was just wondering if Noel could share those things with us as well, if you didn't put it in the minutes of that, and maybe we could get a copy of those as well.
Well, yeah, so I did create a memo for the planning board in regards to understanding of variance requests. Several years ago before I was here, the planning board was working off the seven criteria, but if they met one of the criteria, Sam Painter came back and said, no, you have to meet all the criteria. And the way that the language is in our code is, if you have seen it, it's very hard to understand. It jumps from granting the variance to denying the variance and what it would do and what it wouldn't do and so forth. So I tried to break it down a little bit based on the language that Sam has in his resolutions for granting a variance and then rewording it so it all states the same thing. I think that was a helpful tool for our planning board last week, but we have a lot of turnover, not necessarily turnover, but open positions. We've filled positions, more positions are opening up. In our next meeting or two, depending on what we have, I would like the local government center to come down and meet with our new board members and kind of run through meetings. We, it is struggle some, variances especially. The other topics we see go fairly smoothly, but variance and discussions are difficult. It's difficult when any board doesn't discuss something and then votes on it, and myself and the public and the rest of the board doesn't know really what happened. So after last month's meeting, this meeting was trying to work through the language of a variance. I think we have a lot of work to do, and variances have been something that have come up recently, as you stated, quite often. That is just the only avenue that I have if I say no and they say, well, we want to, is to go before the boards, so.
Any questions for the House?
Well, I understand that, no, no, and which means maybe we need to rethink or some other things, you know, or, one of the complaints that I've heard at the state county board, and I have the same complaint here, is we have one opportunity for presentations of these things, you know, and if they make a decision right there on the meeting, on the spot, we get one workshop, and then this thing is voted upon, you know. I've got to tell you, I spent a week grappling with this and reading all kinds of things, and I probably read that various code 20 different times trying to break down the words and understand all of it, what it means. So actually, if you could share it, I'd really like to see that memo that you have for all of them, because I do think that they need some deciphering of it, you know, and so to understand it. But I would like to see us, if time continues and I'm on this council, for us to work towards variances being a rarity rather than, I understand your position, I understand you have no option, you know, that has to come before here. But it seems like to me that the people who are asking for the variances are trying very hard to structure them in such a way that the city council has to approve them, that there's no other option, you know? And we have to be the final authority for this community, and we have to live with the consequences of that final decision, you know, just like tonight. It's tough because you want to do what is the very, very best for the majority of our citizens. Nothing affects all of our citizens, you know? And somebody's always going to have a financial gain and a financial loss and these things, you know? And so... And so that's a very difficult balancing act, and I would like to do what we could to structure that so that we minimize the gravity of the situation and grappling with it as long as we have to get done.
Yeah, I definitely agree, and I think it's something that myself and Sam can work through and either rewrite the variance code in itself. Like I said, Missoula County, I believe, or the city of Missoula, they don't allow for allowable uses to even be a variance. So then I wouldn't even, something like that wouldn't even come to the board. Granted, you know, there are special situations, the fence next to the brewery, of course, but
Land O.
But, but I, you know, I think it does need some work, and I, our zoning code is a long list of uses, which have covered everything so far, but this was the avenue that we went on this one. But I will definitely look into the variance code as a whole.
Any other comments from the council?
Thank you.
Very well put, Councilmember McGee, something that is new and a lot of y'all still don't even deal with it, it's on the face. Thank you. Councilmember Eaton.
Yes, as it stands right now, the Public Works Committee will be meeting on Monday, June 12th. However, committee members do need to watch their emails and however they get contacted so that if that changes, they can be notified ahead of time. But as it stands right now, we will be having a meeting. And that's all I have. Uh, yes, sir, 6:00, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Second.
It's going to move in second. Eaton, just hear her tell me. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no.